Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Political Science Department of the University of Scranton. My name is Patty Fowler and I am the current president of the League of Women Voters. The League is a nonpartisan, which means that we do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The mission of the Lackawanna County League is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participations by citizens in their government. We encourage you to join the League. Membership information can be found in your program or you can go to our website printed in your program at www.lwvlackawanna.org. We are an all-volunteer organization. Please support our work by making a donation on your way out. Donations help us cover the costs, including taping, so that the debates can be viewed by a wider audience. ECTV is taping... ECTV is taping tonight's debate. The taped debate will be available on YouTube and via links from our website tomorrow. This is not a live broadcast, however, ECTV will air the program on Comcast 19 local TV. Please check the ECTV schedule. A link can be found in your program. Every candidate here tonight has signed a debate agreement that included our audiovisual policy which as follows. No person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from an LWVLC event for campaign purposes. Any use of the media requires the express written approval of the League. The audio or video must be broadcast in its entirety except by legitimate media reporting on events. League LWVC policies for debate are always available on our website at www.lwvlackawanna.org. Our debates are organized by volunteers and as a public service to help volunteers make informed choices. When watching the debate, ask yourself questions like, different questions to help you decide and judge the performance of the candidates. To that end, we ask you to please silence and put away your phones and other devices. In the beginning, this evening, we are pleased to be able to take a few minutes before we start tonight's debate to have the candidates for the Scranton School Board Director to introduce themselves. Each will speak for two minutes. On Saturday, we will be interviewing the candidates. ECTV studios, to hear more from each candidate, please go to our website again at l w v lackawanna.org to view the video recorded interviews. The first will be Greg Popiel.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity that the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County have extended to us. It's a great organization and it allows candidates to speak freely and state their goals and their expectations. I'm seeking a seat on the Scranton School Board. I'm currently on the board. I'm seeking a four-year seat. The reason I have sought this seat is because I feel as though I have the experience and the expertise to help the district in its current financial situation. Four years ago, when I came before this League, I said that the district was in trouble, that there was a slow freight train heading towards the district and the district wasn't handling the financial situations properly. As it happens, unfortunately, I was accurate. We are now in a recovery program set forth by the Department of Education, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I am on the recovery panel along with Barb Dixon, the Board, School Board President. One of the shocking things that has happened since I've gotten on the board and gotten a greater understanding of the district's financial situation is the fact that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is grossly underfunding the Scranton School District. When compared with other urban school districts in Pennsylvania, we are at least $2,000 per student underfunded. This is about a $15 million shortfall. This is something that cannot exist and if it does, if it does continue to exist, it will be a bad day for the citizens and the students of the Scranton School District. We are here to, I was here and along with two other board members, we have gone to every PTA in the, in the, in the city of Scranton. We've gone to the neighborhood associations to stress the need for this fair funding district. I appreciate, once again, my two minutes are up and I would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Popiel. Next would be Tom Borthwick.
First of all, thank you very much for having me. It's an honor to be here with the League and having the opportunity to talk directly to the voters of Scranton. My name is Tom Borthwick. I'm currently a Scranton School Director. For those who don't know me, I've been involved in what's going on in the Scranton School District for the better part of 10 years. I ran for this office in the past and my passion has not changed. In fact, my passion has grown. My wife and sons, we live in Westside. My young son, Tom, hopefully will be entering three-year-old preschool next year and my young son, Joseph, is a week and a day old. So I'm invested. We're not going anywhere. I'm a proud product of Scranton Schools, a lifelong resident of Scranton and I graduated from Westside. And, you know, as, as long as the district is able to set itself right, my kids, and I hope this for my kids and your kids, are going to have a better education than I did because we need to leave something behind that's better than what we had. And right now, that's not looking like it's going to happen. Day after day, I'm sure you see negative headlines in the paper about what could possibly be going on with this district in terms of school cuts, program cuts, and that's not anything that anyone wants to see and it's not what this city deserves. As Mr. Popel alluded to earlier, we have a major issue. The district is woefully underfunded by the state. And what I have done along with Director Popel and Director Duffy has, we have been going to PTA meetings, neighborhood meetings, and letting people in the city of Scranton know we are grossly short-changed. The state is leaving us behind. We are dead last in urban districts for, for school funding and even if they give us the $10.5 million that the governor has allotted, we would still be dead last. This is a major issue. And taking that message to the people and working for the people is what I've been doing and what I'm going to continue to do. So if you give me the opportunity to keep doing that, I promise you I won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, Sarah Cruz.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this event for us tonight. Second of all, I'd like to thank all of those in attendance for making the extra effort for attending this. Thirdly, I'd like to thank the City Council Candidates for waiting patiently while we speak. Webster's Dictionary defines committed as having made a pledge or commitment to someone or something and change as an alteration, a transformation. Ladies and gentlemen, the Scranton School District needs change. Change in the way people see it, change in the way people talk about it, change in the way that state legislators distribute funding, change in how and how much money is spent, change in how its leadership conducts themselves and treats each other in public forums, change in whom and what it considers to be the most important parts of its constituency. Ladies and gentlemen, the Scranton School District needs someone who is committed. I am committed to making wise decisions that are in the best interest of the students, teachers, and taxpayers. I am committed to actively lobbying for more adequate financial funding from Harrisburg. I am committed to being present both mentally and physically at meetings. I am committed to never wavering from what is honest and what is upright. I am committed to respecting my fellow directors even when I don't agree with their views. I am committed to helping to restore the dignity of the district in the city that is the seat of the county. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sarah Cruz and I'm committed to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up, Catherine Fox.
Hello. Firstly, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of all of you this evening. As said, my name is Catherine Fox. I'm a lifelong resident of Scranton, born and raised in West Scranton and currently residing in North Scranton. I graduated from West Scranton High School in 2010 and graduated from the University of Scranton in 2014 with my bachelor's degree in psychology. I have a seven-year-old daughter at home, almost seven-year-old, she turns seven soon, who attends Neil Armstrong Elementary School. I have five brothers and sisters who also are either in the district or graduated from it. I currently work at Lackawanna College where I'm a student life coordinator and veterans' advisor and an adjunct professor in psychology. My whole life circles around work, family, and giving back to others. And my current job is community service. So every day, I'm finding ways to give back to people, to use my skills to help everybody. And that's why I put myself in this position and why I would like to serve on the Scranton School Board. I am also a board member for Day Nursery Association in Scranton. Everything I do circles around what I can give back to others. I love this city. As you can see, I never left it, went to school here, currently work here, and I would love to do anything I can to give back the opportunities that I was grateful enough to be given. If it wasn't for the Scranton School District, I would not be where I am at all today. When I was in a drama class my senior year of high school, a woman came and spoke to us and she said, "The problem is, everybody leaves the city when there's problems. They go somewhere else to try to find it better, but we need people who are going to stay and fix those problems." So that's what I would like to do and that's the impact that the school district had on me. And I would love to make an impact and let other students have an experience like I did. Thank you for your time and I hope for your votes on May 21st.
Thank you, Catherine. The next one in line, her name is Rohum. She couldn't make it this evening but will participate in Saturday's taped interview. So her interview will be on the website after Saturday. Next in line will be Tom Schuster.
Hello, how is everybody tonight? My name is Tom Schuster. I'm a current School Board Member. I've gained election, or gained a seat on the board in 2015. I ran, that was my third campaign that I ran. I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters. I spoke with them on a TV interview last time around. I'm running this time around for reelection. I'm on the ballot for a two-year seat and also the four-year seat. Each time I ran, 2011, 2013, and 2015, I ran on a platform of an open board, transparent with open communication with the public, more dealings in the front room or out on the floor than in the back room. I ran on fiscal discipline or fiscal, we're working to get our financials and fiscal responsibility and also for student achievement. I'm going to be running this time with the same platform, open transparent board, fiscal responsibility, and student achievement. I think I have a solid record on the board. I voted against several things that I felt cost the district money and maybe weren't the best way to spend taxpayer money. I hope for your vote on May 21st and I hope a lot of people get out to the voting booth this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Tara Yanni.
Good evening. My name is Tara Yanni and I'm running for the position of Scranton School Board. Next month, I can proudly say that both of my children are graduates of West Scranton High School. I attribute their academic success to the talented educators and professionals within the Scranton School District. My husband and I are both graduates of public school and I'm the daughter of a public school teacher. I've been endorsed by the Scranton Democratic Party and the Scranton Political Action Committee. I hold a bachelor's degree in business administration and I'm currently employed by coordinated health Scranton orthopedic specialists. My current and my past work experience in healthcare has focused on maintaining revenues, paying expenses, balancing budgets, writing grant proposals, and sending out RFPs for services. I've been a resident of the city of Scranton for over 22 years and my husband and I have tried to show our kids that when your community needs you to step up, it's what you need to do. That's why I'm standing here in front of you tonight. Throughout my boy's education, I've been actively involved with the PTAs. I've initiated programs through the PTAs that have taught our youth about community involvement and school spirit. In addition, I've spearheaded numerous fundraisers for the high school drama club, tennis teams, and golf teams. I'm also a longtime volunteer for the West Scranton Little League. I've been married to the same man for over 22 years. During that time, there's been a lot of compromise and there's been a lot of communication, working hard at communication. I'm going somewhere with this. I believe that with some of the challenges the Scranton School District is now facing, including balancing the budget, paying off debt, low employee morale, and a teacher's contract that needs to be negotiated, that the Scranton School Board and the Scranton Federation of Teachers may need to look at their relationship as one that would also benefit from strong communication and compromise. Both of these entities need to be there for one another in the best interest of our children. It is within my means and is certainly my duty to seek this seat. I'm hopeful that together we can commit to moving forward and providing security and hope for future generations of children within our district. And finally, I am a parent. I am not a politician. I will always put children before politics and I will never quit on our children. I would appreciate your vote on May 21st. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates. That was great. Now let's get to the task at hand. We're here for the City Council Debate. They're all, Mr. Perry is running as an incumbent, the rest of them are running new. Our moderator tonight is Andrea Mulryan. She has been on the board for the League of Women Voters and past president, Andrea Mulryan. Thank you, Patty, and thank you all for being here this evening. And to our School Board Candidates, we appreciate that you took the time to come here tonight and share a little bit about who you are and why you're running for the School Board. And to our City Council Members who've been under the, or Candidates who've been under the lights for a while, thank you for your forbearance as we move through this. This is an important election. It is a primary election. So many people feel that primaries are not important. We are electing two candidates for Scranton City Council on, on May 21st and you'll notice that we're doing one debate this evening because all of these candidates that are here are running on the Democratic ticket. There are no candidates on the Republican ticket at this time. So what would happen? We will elect two of these on November 21st. If there are no writing candidates on the Republican ticket and there are no independent candidates who are running, then on May 21st, we're electing our City Council Members. So primary elections are critically important. The same thing holds true for School Director. Many times, the decisions for School Director are made at the primary election. So I'm preaching to the choir here, but get out and tell your friends and family and all of your neighbors that they need to get out and vote on May 21st. So we are here this evening to talk about Scranton City Council. I think everybody's been asked to silence your mobile devices. Please hold your applause and comments until the end when your candidate gives his or her closing statement. Feel free to cheer and applaud. This will be approximately a 90-minute debate. Candidates are seated alphabetically on the stage. They will answer the same set of questions. No questions were given in advance. Most questions have a 90-second response limit and each candidate will be allowed up to two rebuttals of one minute each. They can use the full two-minute allotment at one time if desired. And I've explained to them that they cannot phone a friend, they cannot hold the time until the end. If they don't use the rebuttals, they go back to me. So with that, I would like to introduce our candidates briefly. The first, and again seated alphabetically, Andrew Chomko, Andy Chomko, was born and resides in Scranton with his wife and son. He's a graduate of West Scranton High School and holds an associate's degree in business administration from Lackawanna College and he also earned a degree in mortuary science from North Hampton Community College. He is a fourth-generation funeral director with the Edward J. Chomko Funeral Home and Cremation Services. He has a military background, having served four tours of combat duty in Iraq and Afghanistan as a corporal in the Army Rangers. He is the recipient of numerous military badges and medals. His civic experience includes helping to reinstate the Lackawanna College Veterans Club. He's co-founder and vice president of Fight for Vets, treasurer of West Scranton Neighborhood Association, and he is also a member of the Knights of Columbus and the American Ukrainian Veterans. Andy, welcome and thank you for your service. Next, we have Mark McCandrew, resides in West Scranton with his wife and three daughters. Also a graduate of West Scranton High School, he earned his associate's degree from the Culinary Institute of America and his vocational education teaching certificate from Temple University. He's a culinary arts instructor for the career, for the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County and formerly worked for Compass Group USA, Flic International, a large contract food service company. He was elected to and has served on the Scranton School Board for the past five years. Mark is active in several civic organizations, including the St. Patrick Day Parade Committee, the West Side Black Sheep Association, and is the ambassador for Cookies for Kids, Pediatric Cancer Research, and Friends of the Poor. Mark, thanks for being here this evening. Next, we have Tim Perry, also born and lives in Scranton. He's a graduate of Scranton Central High School and he earned his associate's degree from Lackawanna College. He is a former district supervisor for Yum Brands and training manager for the Rose Group. He's currently employed as a manager for Inspired Brands. He is a former member of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, currently active in the Manuka Lions Club and the Ancient Order of Hybernians, Scranton JFK Division. He was elected to Scranton City Council and has served from 2016 to the president, to the present, not president. As an incumbent, he has worked on various initiatives during his four-year term. Tim, thanks for being here. And the fourth candidate this evening is Jessica Rothschild. Jessica was born in Red Bank, New Jersey and currently resides in Scranton with her wife. She is a 2007 graduate of Red Bank Catholic High School and earned both her Bachelor of Exercise Science and Physical, a Doctor of Physical Therapy here at the University of Scranton. She is a physical therapist in outpatient therapy for the Lehigh Valley Health Network. She was elected to her four-year term on the Pennsylvania Democratic State Committee in May of 2018. Jessica is active in numerous civic organizations, including as Commissioner of the Pennsylvania Commission for Women and the Scranton Human Relations Commission, Progressive Women of Northeastern Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County Federation of Democratic Women, Vice Chair of the 112th District County Democratic Committee, and former president of Scranton Inclusion, which is the LGBTQ student organization at the University of Scranton and Secretary of the LGBTQ Caucus for the Democratic State Party. Thank you. Those are our candidates for this evening. So we drew straws to see who would answer the first question first and Jessica, you were the lucky one. So we're going to start with you and then we just move in a round robin after that. So the first question, and before I start that, I like to always tell people, what is the job description of the office that they're running for? So you are running for Scranton City Council and the job description is defined in our Home Rule Charter. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's pretty dry, but the first sentence in that section says, "The mayor and council jointly shall be the governing body of Scranton City Government," and that "The powers of city government shall be divided among the executive and legislative branches of city government. All powers and duties of the city government which are legislative in nature shall be exercised and performed by the council." So there's more to it than just that, but it's all, like I said, pretty dry. So that's kind of the idea, legislative body of the city of Scranton. So that's what we're going to focus on tonight. Before we start focusing on policy, I want to first ask a personal question. So Jessica, this goes to you first and you're allowed one minute for your response time if you need it. Are all of your local, city, school, and county, state, and federal taxes and fees paid up to date, including garbage fees? This question covers your personal obligations as well as those for any business you may own or have a partial interest in, and if you have outstanding delinquent balances, please briefly explain why and when you'll be paid up to date. You have one minute. The question is yours.
Yes, thank you. We are up to date, the exception of the local tax for 2018. My wife's job doesn't, hasn't taken out enough, so we do owe them, I believe, $600 that will be paid on time.
All right. Thank you. And then the question, Andy, goes to you.
Yes, ma'am. All my taxes are paid and up to date, as far as I know. So if you, if you know anything, I don't know, I'd like to know.
I'll leave it to Boris at the Times to find that out.
My answer is yes.
All right. And Tim?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. So now let's talk about policy a little bit. So, well, actually, it's still a little personal. The next question, Andy, is going to go to you first. So what are your reasons for running? The gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on City Council of Scranton is that it is a really difficult job. Why do you want this job personally? And you have 90, a minute and a half, 90 seconds to answer.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for giving us the opportunity to be here and to give our ideas and thoughts about this. Thank you to the University of Scranton for providing the venue. Thank you for everyone in attendance tonight and for those of you at home, thank you for allotting the time to listen to people who care about this city. And that's what it's about. I care about this city. I was born here, I was raised here, and by God, I'm going to die here. I would rather be part of the solution than to sit back and talk about it. We all can talk about what we want to do, what we could do, what we should do, but there's a difference between talking about it and being about it and doing something to be part of the solution, working with others, working with people as a team that are committed to helping our residents and the taxpayers of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, the question goes to you. Why do you want this job?
Okay, also, I'd like to thank the Women League of Voters and all of you for coming out today. My desire to serve started at a very young age. My father, Bill McCandrew, when he came back from the Korean War, married my beautiful mother, Eileen Judge. They had three big bouncing baby boys. My father became a fireman, very proud firefighter, but then a few years after that, he was killed by a drunk driver. So that left my mother as a widow and a few years after that, my mother sat down with me and my two brothers and said, "You know, I want to run something by you. It has to, you know, it has to be okay with you guys," he said, "but," or she said, "but you know, there's kids less fortunate than us. There's an orphanage called Our Lady of Fatima up in Clark's Green." And my mother said, "I would like to bring a couple of kids out at holidays because they don't have the opportunity to spend them with anybody." So of course, we all agreed, she said, "There'll be less under the tree." But we said, "Sure." And, you know, we had, we had kids of different nationalities, different colors, and they were brought into our home and we shared a table at Thanksgiving with them. There were, there was gifts under the tree for them. And at Easter, they had baskets and Easter outfits. They never had this before. The joy I saw in them was pretty much the first time I was inspired that, you know, the need or the desire to serve others. And then, after a career in culinary arts, and a wonderful career, I had the opportunity to teach, and then in front of students and seeing that I can impact lives, I thought I can contribute at a higher level, running for School Board, and that's what I've done. Okay, I have to stop.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. Why do you want this job?
Again, thank you for, for having us. Thank you to the University of Scranton for hosting us. Everybody here that, that came out of their busy day and the nice weather to, to attend and everybody at home that's going to be watching this later and everybody's going to be going to vote. That's the most crucial part and that's why we're here. I, I decided that I wanted to get involved with our city. Unlike Mr. Chomko, I don't have a military background. My brothers are police officers, but, you know, I want to know where I fit in. How do I fit in? How can I help my community? What, what do I have that I can give back to help progress everybody into the future? And with my business background, I thought City Council was a great idea and seeing the financials of the city four years ago, I thought it was a good time to, to get involved and, and that's what we did. I'm very proud of the last three-plus years that I served on Council. We haven't raised taxes. We, we've actually held the line in our finances and recovered quite well. But what I, why I really am seeking reelection, what really drives my passion, is the small rocks. Legislation is the big rocks. The small rocks are all the phone calls, emails, and, and questions I get on the street about stop signs, speeding, dirt for Little League field, you know, little things that might not be quite important to everybody, but you know what? It's important to them and that's their big issue they have of the day. And that's something where I can be. I'm that liaison, I'm that conduit, I'm them, getting them from, from point A to point B and that's why I want to be City Councilman.
Okay, thank you. And Jessica, the question goes to you. Why do you want this job?
Thank you and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting these debates each election year. It's really critical that people stay informed of the, the candidates that they're going to be voting for and to help encourage people to, to vote. It's very important. I didn't have in my resume, but I was Secretary of the Debate Society at the University of Scranton. And it's, it's really full circle to be here. It's very fitting. This, this school really inspired me to do much of the work that I'm doing today. It taught me many of my values here, really made me the person who I am. Scranton did that for me and that was why I decided to stay in Scranton. I was committed to making a life here. I met my wife here, we're homeowners. And when I was graduating the University of Scranton, I realized pretty much everyone I knew was leaving the area. They were usually going back to where they came from. We have a lot of students from New York or New Jersey here and that was really disappointing to me and that was my community and I really had to, I think, build, build a new community. to me, and that was my community, and I really had to, I think, build, build a new community here. And so I did get very involved, as you can tell. I've been a part of many statewide organizations, local organizations, working for progressive causes, and that work's been very important to me, and that's all been volunteer outside of my, my day job as a physical therapist. I really care about helping people, and as a homeowner, I knew that there were issues here that needed to be addressed, and that's what I hope to do as a City Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question, Mark, you'll get this question first. So let's talk about the garbage fee, what I will personally term as a scandal. The biggest headline regarding the city's finances at this time seems to pertain to unpaid garbage fees. Millions are uncollected, yet we have a tax office, a legal office, and we pay an outside firm to manage this. What specifically can City Council do to quickly resolve this issue? Mark, the question is yours, and you have 90 seconds.
All right, I agree. It's a fiasco. It's very disturbing to me. This has been going on since 2002. It was identified, nothing was done, no one's collecting any money. What I would propose is, first of all, we have, the companies involved now, Northeast Revenue, are only adding fees that they're collecting. So we have to look at that. I would first put them out. They're not, you know, they're not doing their job, hold them accountable. Secondly, what I propose is, okay, so you get your garbage fee, all right? You have 90 days. You don't pay it in 90 days, send it to the magistrate. That's the only way I think we can collect it. We have to get this money back, and moving forward, we have to be able to collect it within a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. What specifically can City Council do to quickly resolve this issue?
Quickly is a relative term, but we definitely can put some things in play immediately. The one thing that I already brought up was to put Northeast Revenue contract, that needs to go out for bid. That's a year-by-year contract, and we're under no obligation.
Tim, excuse me, you need to, a little bit closer. Is that turned on?
Are we good?
There you go. Now you're good.
Sorry about, I'm not used to have it this close. Yeah, we need to put that contract out for bid. We need, we're the customer. They're not the customer. We're the customer, and they need to be working harder for us to collect this money. And this, this is a two, this coin has two sides to it, and there's two problems of it. We need to collect the money that we're owed, and we need to collect the money going forward, and there's two different problems. To collect the money going past, we need to take these people to the magistrate immediately, and we need to cease all rental agreements with these companies, because they're businesses. That's what these landlords are. They're running a business in the city of Scranton. They should not be allowed to operate. We already have laws and legislation to stop that, and we need to act on that immediately. And that's something that we need to do, and going forward, we need this garbage fee embedded into the already property taxes, because this separate fee is ridiculous, and it's just open for too many problems, as we can see. It needs to be just embedded into the property tax and paid as property tax is paid, and this problem will stop going forward.
Thank you. Jessica, the question goes to you. What specifically can City Council do to resolve the issue?
I agree that this needs to be addressed, and it needs to occur quickly. I'm very surprised that we've let it get this far. I think we clearly need a better tracking system, something that's, that's more efficient, and we need better communication with residents, too, if they are behind on their fees. And I think we need to make sure that we have the preventative methods to prevent, to keep this from happening again in the future. I mean, that's a lot of money that's, that's left on the table for the city that, that we could be putting to good use by not collecting those fees. I think that perhaps we could add to the legislation that's, that's already in existence for some more incentives or other consequences for people being delinquent in their garbage fees, and I agree that I believe we should change the contract to a different company because they're, they're not doing the work for us right now. That's pretty clear to everyone.
Okay. Andy, the question goes to you.
I agree with everyone that's here, all the candidates. It's ridiculous what's going on, that over $16 million cannot be collected. Northeast Revenue is the company that was contracted. I'm willing to bet that they are in breach of contract. So I think that the contract needs to be reexamined. We need to get our money back from what we already paid them, and then we need to do it in small bites. We need to go after the biggest offenders first, get the biggest chunks of money first, see what worked, see what didn't. If we can get all, say, for instance, $250,000, if we can get all $250,000, let's see what works. If that works, you go after the second offender. Second offender owes $100,000. We don't get $100,000, so we get $50,000. Let's see what works and what doesn't work. Go after the biggest fish first and work our way down. I'm surprised that no one even brought up anything about our senior citizens when it comes to the garbage fees. I mean, I know that the council has, on Monday nights, they've expressed, they've expressed their concerns about senior citizens having to pay $300. I'm willing to propose a senior citizen discount if we can't just get rid of the garbage fee. Totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Tim, the next question goes to you first, and I'm going to stick with garbage, sorry, just for a little bit, and I want to talk about this class action suit. So both my husband and I recently received letters, I think it was just at the end of last week, from a law firm with details about a class action lawsuit against the city for charging more for the garbage fee than the cost to the city for garbage disposal. What is your reaction to the lawsuit, and what's its potential impact on the city?
Well, it's, the potential impact is really, it's too, way too early to find out or to understand what the potential impact could be, but, I mean, there's validity to it. We charge a $300 fee, which we have done a study for. We're still trying to determine what is the actual amount that needs to be collected for garbage, and, you know, to this day, the citizens have not been given an answer that they like. So they're at the point now where they've, they're up against the wall, they have no choice but to take this action of a class action suit, and they're totally within their right to do that. And when this goes to court, the courts are going to decide, one way or the other, the legality of this fee. And again, I'm, I'm, this fee, $300 fee is excessive. We were able to get it down in the last two years to $270, but I think $270 is still, just a couple of years ago, is about $172, $178, and then, for no reason, no rhyme, it went up to $300. And then, you know, once, once you get a fee, it's tough to roll back, and, you know, I give it up to these citizens because they're doing, they're doing what they think is right, and I can't necessarily disagree with them. I want this garbage fee gone altogether.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, the question goes to you. What is your reaction and what is its potential impact on the city?
Sure. I agree that, I think residents must be incredibly frustrated. I mean, we were as surprised as anyone to receive that, that letter in the mail, to know that the lawsuit was occurring, and I think we're getting into too many of these, these situations, which shows that we haven't, we haven't been effective as a city in governing. And so I would, I would like to be able to make us more effective. As for whether or not we change it to a per-bag fee, I have been canvassing and talking to residents, and I've heard a lot of different ideas about it. People are concerned about not being able to make the fee as it is now. People who are on fixed incomes, it is really problematic for them. So for those people, perhaps a per-bag fee may be a way to go, something, something to change to keep us from getting into this situation again. So I would, I'd like to look at all the options. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Andy, the question goes to you. What's your reaction and what is its potential impact on the city?
I've heard about the lawsuit for a while, and I was surprised, just as everyone else was, when I got the letter in the mail the other day. I don't, I don't know where it's going to go. I believe that if it does go in favor of the people who file suit, the city's on the hook to pay them. The city's on the hook to pay them back. But then again, what's going to happen to all the people that already paid their garbage fees? That's not fair to them. So is the city going to be on the hook for that, too? I don't know. I agree that it needs to be looked, looked into further. Is a per-bag system, is that okay? Look at Old Forge. They were buying tickets or stickers. My aunt lived in Old Forge. Her issue was, she would buy stickers, and then her garbage would be left there because someone took the stickers. So then we're going to have to combat that. Do we do a hybrid thing? I don't know. Do we look at other municipalities that privatized it, and they're paying more than $300? This is what council's going to have to debate and deliberate and work together to come to a agreement for the betterment of all our constituents, for the betterment of all our residents and all our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, the question to you, please.
Okay, well, first of all, it's pretty sad that it had to come to this, and the reason it came to this, a lawsuit, is because the administration is not forthcoming with where does the $300 go. It went from like $178 to $300 with no explanation. That'd be like receiving a gas bill at your house, that you're on the budget for $180, and all of a sudden, it's $380 with no explanation. So unfortunately, it came to this, but, but since we're talking about it, it might get some momentum, you know, because people are upset about it, I'm upset about it. Is it even constitutional? I don't know. I mean, there's a lawsuit. I said it's sad to have one, but this might finally get closure for everybody. With regards going to bags or not bags, or the fee itself, that would have to be discussed, but we have to first figure out if it's legal, what occurred was legal. And then repercussions from that, you know, every lawsuit requires, you know, there's insurers that will cover it. Does it? I don't know if it'll cover this. The city has insurance for stuff like that. So the outcome financially, I don't know, but I'm glad it's brought forward, so people are talking about it. We're talking about it here. So now maybe something, it'll push the administration to actually get something done or be more forthcoming. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, this next question goes to you first, and I want to talk about revenue. What can or should City Council do to increase revenue other than raising taxes? And please focus only on realistic options that can be accomplished by City Council, and you have 90 seconds to respond.
Yeah, the taxes should not be raised. I don't think that is a good option. I think there are some creative solutions that we can find to help reduce our, our expenses. I think we really need to take a close look at it, maybe model off of what some other cities our size have done, and I think one good option for us as a city is to institute some environmental changes. We really are not a very environmentally friendly city. We, we don't have, we don't have green buildings. Our, our City Hall is not green. Perhaps it could with the renovation, but I think we could, we could save a lot of money there in the long term if we, if we start to have some more green policies. And I think we already saw that with the change of the LED lights. That was something that resulted in cost savings, so I'm interested in knowing what other options we have there. In addition to that, I just think that overall, we need to make government more efficient. We need better communication. We need better ways of tracking things. I think we're going to lose less money, like the garbage fees, if we do that. I think it's, it's a problem with how we're, we're communicating between departments, and so that's something that I would really like to change and to update. We need to modernize things, because we're, we're way far, we're, we're too far behind. I think we're operating in the 90s.
Okay, thank you. Andy, the question goes to you about revenue. What other revenue sources should City Council consider?
When it comes to revenue, besides other sources, we need to collect the fees that we already have. We have rental registration fees that were supposed to be a source of revenue for rental units, for out-of-state landlords, for absentee landlords. They're supposed to be paying a fee if it's anything over a set, a set amount of units. We need to collect those fees, to include the garbage fee, but then again, we need to wait and see how this plays out before, the lawsuit plays out, before we get into that. To create revenue, we need more taxpayers in the city. To have more taxpayers, we need to be attractive to people who aren't from here, to local, from local college graduates, local trade school graduates, veterans that just come out of school. How do we get them to stay in the city? We have a landlord problem. We have an absentee landlord problem. We know this. Everyone knows it. If we can give these people some sort of incentive, let them buy a multi-unit property, owner occupied, and as long as... Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
Okay.
We need more taxpayers in the city. That's how we get more revenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mark, the question now to you, please.
Okay, so increasing revenue. I'm against raising taxes. I voted no to raise taxes, school taxes this year, because the district didn't do enough. I'd vote no to raise taxes in the city because they're not doing enough. To increase revenues, you have to become more efficient. So the first thing I would do is revamp the lifts department. It's a disaster. It has to be modernized. We need to incorporate technology. If you go to, if you go to pull a license, or if you go to pay a fee, it should be done online. You get a parking ticket. I'm sure everybody in this room's had a parking ticket before. You can't get there by 4 o'clock to pay it, or, or you'll get a parking ticket because there's nowhere to park. So I believe that all registration, all fees should be done online, and I don't want to hear, well, you know, it costs money with credit cards, but you just add a couple bucks onto that fee. We're already using credit cards and debit cards with, with the parking kiosk, but I think, you know, if we're more efficient, we're going to save money. Does it produce revenues? I just, it reduces expenditures. Also, there's a smart initiative I heard about that's being talked about. It's another forum where there's kiosks that we put throughout the city, information kiosks where you could use advertisements or sell advertisements on the screens. That's another way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Tim, the question to you, please.
Yeah, I mean, this is a totally, well, I have a totally different answer this time around than I did last time. The city was in much dire financial situation where, you know, we were revenue-sensitive, to say the least, but we, the city in the last three years hasn't had an issue writing its budget and meeting its goals. Obviously, we haven't raised taxes in three years. So yes, we'd like to raise revenue. We would, but we are not up against the wall to raise revenue. We're at the point right now where we did two years ago, we lowered our transfer tax into the city of Scranton to make it more appealing. The business administrator was a little worried if that would leave a hole in the budget. It did the exact opposite. We actually brought more people in to transfer into the city because of that, and I want to use that data to, to lower our wage tax in the city of Scranton. If we lower our wage tax in the city of Scranton, we're going to collect less money off more people, and that's what it's about. That's how you bring people in here. That's how you'll get more jobs in here if we lower the suppressive taxes that we have. Now, we're holding steady. Taxes are not going up. We're not raising taxes. We're financially strong right now, but right now, we need to start thinking more un-Scranton-like, if you will, and we need to start peeling back some of these taxes, and that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Andy, this next question goes to you first. So let's talk about public-private partnerships. These partnerships are becoming more common throughout the country as governments try to address fiscal stress. Please share your thoughts on the pros and cons of such partnerships, and give an example of current or possible public-private partnerships that you believe are or would be beneficial to Scranton residents.
Public-private partnerships. They're good. They're essential for any city, for any city that wants to do good things and to progress. You need to have good partnerships. Look no further than the University of Scranton. They have programs that help our people, our own citizens and residents of the city. The Spark Program that the university started, it helps out at-risk youths. In certain areas of the city, they actually go and take them on excursions for a week. They have an effort program to where they actually donate food to local food pantries and shelters. The University of Scranton also has a high school scholars program to where students from the city, from Scranton and West Scranton, they can go and take college-level classes while they're still in school. If we could get more places, more universities, more colleges to follow the University of Scranton's lead, to help, I think, I think that'd be very good for our, for our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mark, the question goes to you about public-private partnerships.[1766.83]
Okay, so public partnerships and private partnerships, well, there's really two different kinds, I believe. So the public being like what Andy just mentioned about the University of Scranton, some of them are done through pilot programs, sometimes you get some money, but you know, the money is kind of like, it's considered their fair share, but it's kind of like a birthday card from your godmother, you got 25 bucks in the card. But I think these partnerships should grow into maybe internships for our students in various schools, in high schools, career and tech programs, where these internships are established, they're giving more to the students, they're developing more experience, where they want to stay within the area and maybe raise families and find jobs here. One I just mentioned, a private partnership, is the kiosk one I just mentioned. That'd be a great way to partner with us, sell advertisement on these kiosks where we can get some more revenue. Another one recently, which was talked about at the Neighborhood Association meetings, was the beautiful, or, I'm sorry, the beautification grant, that where, you know, a neighborhood gets together, you can get $1,000 if you can show you're gonna beautify your neighborhood, whether it's, you know, adding windows or changing something, but that's a great way for your community to come together, because there's a lot of revitalization going downtown, there's beautiful things happening down here, but this has to reach the neighborhoods. So that's a great partnership, reaching the neighborhoods where they can beautify together and feel more proud about their homes and the places they live at. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Tim, the question to you, please.
Yeah, those partnerships, they're crucial for any city, any community. You know, it's about, I guess, the word, it used to be a buzzword, I don't even know if anybody uses it anymore, synergy. It's about synergy, finding the right type of private entity to couple with a public or governmental agency. And when you can find that perfect marriage, things work out really well. I believe Mr. McCandry said internship. City council has an internship we're about to roll out with the University of Scranton. Once we roll that out with the University of Scranton, we're gonna open it up to other schools in our area, colleges. Those people will be working in all departments within the city and doing real functions that will not only help us, but also give them the experience they're going to need to go out into their field, whether it's poly sci or whatever field they want to get into. It's gonna give them good, real-life experience. And there's so many of them, like Boys and Girls Club, working closely with schools, giving them someplace for the kids to go after school, where it's safe. I mean, Scranton tomorrow is a great organization that just does a ton of things for our city. So I think it's about finding the right type of private entity to work with the government, and then once you find that, you know it works, and that's what it's all about, and it is very important.
Thank you. And Jessica, the question to you.
I agree with the others that the, both the public and private partnerships are really valuable to our city, and I hope that, I believe that that's what's going to help us with progress. Some of the things that we don't have budgeted out or have the money for, these other entities could take part in initiating. And I think it was great, Mark brought up the Beautiful Blocks program that NeighborWorks recently started, they had gotten grant money and they're hoping to get more for following years if there's a lot of interest in it. I know we personally applied for it along with some others on our block, and it's a really great way to bring the community together. And so I see these partnerships not just, you know, helping us out as a city, but helping us out as a community to bring us together. The University of Scranton is, was another great example, and I think it's a, you know, partnering with the local colleges and universities. We have so many of them around, and we're losing those students, and really, we should be keeping them here, because they're the new generation, they're gonna, they're what's going to help our city to thrive. And so I thought the same thing with internships. We really don't have much social media for the city, and I think there's a lot of work that could be done with our website to help with our communication, so bringing in college students to help with that, maybe starting a new marketing campaign for the city about, you know, our love for Scranton, to bring other people in. That's something that I would be really interested in spearheading.
Okay, thank you. Mark, this next question goes to you. I want to talk about reassessment, and I understand that this is not a city responsibility, but the implications for the city are huge. Do you support or oppose a Lackawanna County property reassessment? Please explain your opinion and what steps you will take to make sure that the county commissioners understand your position.
Well, my position is I am for it. I mean, it equalizes the tax base for everybody. I just want it to be fair for our senior citizens. The fact of the matter is, I think pretty soon, it's not gonna matter where you're at with it, we're gonna be forced to do it. So once we're forced to do it, it has to be done fairly. It has to be, other people have to, first of all, you have to find the right people to do it, and to do it fairly and correctly.
Okay. Tim, the question to you. Do you support or oppose, and how will you let the county commissioners understand your position?
Oh, yeah, I'm chomping at the bit. I almost didn't let you finish the actual question, because this is something I'm clearly on the record for. I mean, one of the very first things I realized when I was knocking on doors back in my first, first time I ran for city council, was just the disparage of property taxes just within our own city. We have people that have the same type of square footage, same type of footprints in their community, and it's not even close! And so the county commissioners decided to put something on the ballot to ask if we wanted to do it. That's a county commissioner's job, to reassess the county. It's their job, it's not up to them to ask us if they should do their job. Yes, do your job, please. It needs to be done to be fair and equitable for everybody. And let's make this really clear, it's a revenue-neutral situation. The county will not collect one extra penny, one extra penny from a reassessment. All it does is equal the playing field, to make sure everybody's paying what they should, because right now, we have a race to the bottom. That's what we have right now. Everybody's getting the property tax, and they're going to the county, and they're trying to get it reassessed themselves, and they're trying to get it down, so now everybody's getting there and they're going down, down. Let's just get this taken care of already. I don't understand what the issue is. All right.
Okay.
I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you. Jessica, the question goes to you about reassessment.
I agree with the other candidates that we do need property tax reassessment. It's just, it's not fair to many, many people out there. I think there's a lot of fear around it, that people's taxes may increase, but really, it could do the opposite and lessen your taxes. And I think it does have to be done carefully, with great understanding of people's different situations, and with like a slower initiation, it's not happening tomorrow. But it's something that I see as necessary. We really should have done it decades ago, and it's, I think, becoming as much of a shock to people now, because it hasn't been done. But I think once we get through it and we start doing regular reassessments, then it'll make a lot more sense to people.
Okay, thank you. And Andy, the question to you, please.
The last reassessment, now, correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone knows anything, was in the 60s.
68.
1968. Most of us don't have cars that old. It's absolutely absurd and it's ridiculous that it hasn't already happened. If it, say, happened in the late 80s, middle 90s, I would say, eh, maybe we could wait a little bit. But furthermore, let's talk about why it's important. Big business isn't gonna come here, and when they're looking, oh, man, they haven't been reassessed since like the 1960s. What, no, we need to be reassessed, and if we get reassessed, I'm willing to bet that we're gonna see a boom in big business coming here. Not just the mom-and-pop shops, but big business will come here if we get reassessed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tim, this next question goes to you first. I want to talk about Scranton's neighborhoods. Pick any neighborhood in the city of Scranton, what are the issues you see in that specific neighborhood, and what action would you take to address those issues? And please be sure that your actions are within the scope of city council, and you have 90 seconds.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I can be specific about West Side or South Side, but these issues are specific throughout the city of Scranton. The one is the blight in the city and the need for more B-cops in the city. And what city council can do is we can streamline this issue that we're having with our blight and these homes that need to be taken down, they just need, they're lagging too long, they're on lists for too long, and they're not, they're not being taken care of in a timely fashion. And this is something that we've, I think, the License and Inspection Department's been brought up once already tonight, and that is an issue that we're dealing with right now. Is there a lot on their plate? There is a lot on their plate, but the communication hasn't been out there, and the people in this city and in West Side and the South Side, they're frustrated and they've been waiting too long to have these issues taken care of, and they deserve serious answers in a timely fashion. And as far as the B-cops in the city of Scranton, in these neighborhoods, as council, we've already initiated a census program to make sure that we are making sure that every single person in this city gets counted for our census. The more people that get counted, the more funding we get. I believe the study was, we lose $1,000 for every person we do not count over the span of a census, and that is money that we're just not taking. So we need to make sure we're counting everybody that we have in our city, because we need every dollar of that federal money to make sure we can use that for comd programs to get people out in our neighborhoods all the time.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, the question to you. Pick a neighborhood and tell us what you can do about the issues there.
It's hard to pick a neighborhood. Throughout my campaign, I've been going to each neighborhood, I've gone to several of the Neighborhood Association meetings to learn about some of the different neighborhood issues. I myself, I'm a homeowner in the Hill section, but I previously lived in North Scranton and South Side, and I would agree that a common theme is blight in each of these neighborhoods. When I'm knocking on doors, people will typically talk about blight, the taxes, flooding is an issue in certain neighborhoods, and then, you know, I think the garbage fees and recycling are on a lot of people's minds as well, so those are some of the common ones that I've heard throughout the neighborhoods. I was in North Scranton this weekend, though, in a neighborhood that I used to live, walking the same block, and the same house that needs to get torn down is still there years later. There's no reason for it, there's empty windows, they're not even boarded up, and it just looks like a hazard for the neighborhood, and it was one of the reasons that we moved from that street, because of properties like that. And so it could really bring down a neighborhood, and I think it's something that we need to make a priority to address.
Okay, thank you. Andy, the question goes to you. Pick a neighborhood, tell us about the issues, and what actions are within the scope of city council to fix them.
When it comes to a neighborhood, you can't just say it's just one neighborhood, it's the whole city, as Jess said. Everyone has similar complaints, and blight seems to be one that every neighborhood has an issue with. There's condemned homes that need to be torn down for years. Well, there was a situation out in Beaver Falls, Pennsylvania, to where the police chief noticed that there was unsafe homes that needed to be torn down. The city didn't have enough money to do it, so what they did, they utilized the assets that they already knew that we had. Pennsylvania National Guard has a military unit called the Engineers. The Engineers came to town in Beaver Falls, PA, and they knocked down all the buildings, they leveled it, and it was the city's responsibility, or Beaver Falls' responsibility, to collect it and get it to a landfill. If that's what we need to do, why don't we do it? Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Mark, the question to you, please.
All right, you said pick a neighborhood, I don't want to pick one, because then I'm picking on one single neighborhood. So like the rest of the candidates said, I've been out walking, knocking on doors, I've been talking to people, and they share the same concern. And one, you know, the major one is blight. And what they tell me is, you know, this is, these concerns have been for a while, so their biggest concern is we report it, it goes, they feel that it falls on deaf ears, and it goes unheard. So what I think we should do, or would be able to do, is set up some type of portal. Once again, let's incorporate technology, maybe not everyone's that savvy, but even call, say, the LIPS department and say, listen, we got a problem here, I'm voicing a concern or a complaint, register it, or if you do it yourself online, you should be able to go in and check the status of it. Well, okay, where is it two days from now, where is it a week from now? So at least these, you know, the concerns that are being heard, you know, the neighbors or the citizens can see the status of it, because like I said, and I was also told, you know, sometimes they do a saturation on blight. But people have told me, you know, the only time they do anymore is during a Mira election. So I just think we need better communication, better collaboration with all departments in the city, and put together some type of system that's not working, and be able to check on the status. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, this next question goes to you first. So I've been moderating debates for the legal women voters for a long time, and I've been asking this question for a really long time. We have been a distressed city since 1992. Are you confident that the city can implement its plan to exit Act 47's financially distressed status despite any ongoing problems? Please explain your opinion. It's been since 1992. It goes to you first.
Thank you. I'm curious about some of the answers that you've heard over the years. I think we're maybe closest to it now, more than ever before, and I think is exciting at the prospect of exiting distressed status. And I have read the exit strategy and plan that was proposed, and I, you know, I think there are a lot, there are things that we need to do to make sure our financial house is in order before we exit distressed status. And I want to make sure that we're careful, you know, raising taxes isn't an option. And I think, you know, I think if we make things more efficient, if we take a look at some of these policies that we need to institute over the next few years, to make sure that we're increasing revenue and decreasing our expenditures as a city, I do feel that it could happen, but it's gonna take some smart decisions and teamwork among city council and the mayor to make that happen.
Thank you. Andy, the question goes to you. Can we finally get out of distressed status?
I would like to think that we can get out of distressed status. I believe that we're gonna be forced out either in 2020 or 2021, I believe. But this question, you're right, you've asked this for years, and everyone says, oh, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. It hasn't happened. We need to, it's a gray cloud that just hovers over our area. Think about the morale of our people when you go to another town. Is that where you're from? Oh, I'm from Scranton. Think that they're proud to say that? No, we need to get out of distressed status, we need to help get out of that status, we need to follow the exit strategy to a T, and once we're there, that's gonna open up the door to a lot of other options that we are not afforded right now. Thank you.
All right. Mark, the question to you, please.
Okay, so we have two options. If we don't go out of, if we don't exit Act 47, we go into receivership. So, you know, a couple of things that could have affected it, or maybe it had its better exit, was, you know, the sewer authority sale, I wasn't for it, but we left money on the table, so we didn't do very well with that. So moving forward, and I agree with some of the stuff that Jess has mentioned, you know, and it goes back to some of the previous questions, we need to be more efficient, we need to reduce costs, we need to be, come into the 21st century and find ways to save money, you know, using technology and changing policies and systems that aren't working. So I'm hopeful that we do, but again, we have to be very careful.
Okay, thank you. And Tim, the question to you. Can we finally get out of distressed status?
Yes, we'll be out of distressed status. I'm very, very happy to say that, it's been a while, and it's taken a lot of hard work. And again, this is a question that I got three years ago, and I'm glad to say that we have corrected our ship financially, and, you know, and we've been smarter with our money. One instance how we've been smarter with our money is the Sorrenti Building. We got that at no charge from the federal government, where we house a lot of our police equipment, a lot of our expensive police equipment, our bomb unit is stationed there, and it needs upgrades, the building does, every building does, and this one more than others, especially since we want to make it our training center. But we committed, and the business administrator committed, and the mayor committed, and city council committed, that we weren't gonna spend $1 from our general fund to do that. That was gonna be done through sourcing out grants to make sure that building can get up to where we want it to be, and we weren't going to overspend ourselves. So I, we just had an email today that we have money coming in, and that's gonna be allocated for upgrades to the Sorrenti Building, and that's what we're gonna do, we're not gonna overspend ourselves. We are, right now, Pennsylvania Economy League, who is our babysitter during this process, has never been more pleased with the city's financials and how well we are orchestrating our city operations right now. They're very pleased, and right now, we have met every obligation to get out of it. Right now, we're in the probation stage, where they want to see us do this for a set amount of time, so they can actually feel comfortable getting us out. But we're already there, we've met every obligation, now we want to just sustain that for a period of time, and then we're done. But yes, we will be out.
Okay, thank you. Andy, this next question goes to you first. So there's been a lot in the newspaper and on social media, people talking about city hall. What is your opinion on the physical state of the city hall building and the potential for moving city offices to another location?
The city hall building is a landmark for the people of Scranton. I don't believe that we should get rid of it, I don't believe we should sell it. I believe the figure was somewhere over $10 million to rehab it. Anyone that has ever undertaken or been a part of a construction project knows that it will cost more money it will cost more money and it will cost and take up more time than expected. We don't need to swallow the whole pill at once. What we can do is start from the top and work our way down. Let's button up the roof. Then you work down from there. Let's button up the outside and work down from there, small bites. You don't need to stake in one bite. You cut it up and you do it in small bites, or phases, for construction terms. I believe that that's what we need to do. We don't need to sell it. We need to tackle the problem at hand, small bites. Start from the top, work our way down. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark, the question to you about the City Hall building.
Okay, first of all, I'm totally against selling City Hall. I'm alive long enough to remember that we sold the muni, the golf course. We sold all of our assets. And how many bids were the construction bid or the renovation bid? There was one. So is that a true, accurate number? I don't know. I would first put it out to bid again, and at least receive three bids to see what it would actually cost to renovate. I don't know, but I think that's the first step. And again, yeah, we should also reach out and look for some grant money. There's some architectural grant money out there. There's got to be. Was that explored? I don't know. These are things I think we should do. Because if we do sell it, who are we going to sell it to? What is it going to be used for? The way it's designed, I don't think you could put a bunch of apartments in there like they're doing in buildings. I don't know if the two colleges want it. Would we get any, how much revenue would we get for it? Would we get a fair price? I don't know. Would somebody get it that probably shouldn't get it? I don't know. So I think that's something we have to roll back, take, you know, take a couple, a couple minutes or time to really focus on how we're going to do this and why we're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, the question goes to you. The City Hall building.
Yeah, the City Hall building. I went on tour with Mr. O'Hore. He's our maintenance manager. And the building needs a lot of work. It really does. And it hasn't been taken care of in a long time correctly. It's just been patched together. You know, the saying is, the can gets kicked down the road, so to speak. And, you know, you can't do that with property, with a facility, with your assets. You need to take care of your assets, or else something like this happens. And here's where we are. But I'll tell you right now, it is not going to be sold while I'm on city council. It just won't. That's our city hall. It's just not going to happen. There's other ways to do it. I believe we have one bid from Highland Associates for $10.3 million, $10.2 million. That's, to me, that's a starting point. That doesn't tell me anything, because there's nothing to compare it to. I would like three more bids, to get four bids and see what, bids on different things, replacing windows, not replacing windows. You know, we need to do a more comprehensive bidding process on this. Also, the grants. We already have a $5.3 million grant in the pipeline for approval. If we get that, then we can start using that $5 million in grants to start fixing from the outside in, stop those water leaks. Even though I don't want to sell this building, and it will not be sold, but the employees and the citizens deserve a safe and functional city hall. So we also have to provide that, too. And that's what we need to do. Instead of bailing and leaving, we need to actually own that building and take care of it, because it hasn't been done in the last two decades.
Okay, thank you. And Jessica, the question to you.
So the last thing that we need in Scranton are more vacant buildings. When I drive around or walk around the city, I see way too many places that could really be good, put to good use, that we could have booming businesses in. And with how beautiful City Hall is and its historical significance and importance to Scranton, the last thing that we should want to do is sell it. And we don't even know who it would go to or when it would go to them, how long it would be, would be sitting there. And that would be really sad to see. So if elected a city council, I would not sell City Hall. I think it's scary when you see the numbers and that there's, you know, $10 million versus $5 million. But those aren't the final numbers. Like, it's already been stated, $10 million is just based on one bid. We don't have to do everything included in that bid. I would like to see, as I mentioned earlier, some green initiatives to help sustain the building and to save money in the long run. And I do think that grant money would be helpful in making those repairs and setting a priority list for what needs to get done and how long it's going to take us. And then making sure that we have the maintenance plan so that we don't get behind like this again in maintaining the building.
Okay, thank you. And no one used any of their rebuttals, so that time comes back to me, which means I get to ask another question. And this will be the last question for the evening before we move to closing statements. So Mark, this question will go to you first. Scranton tomorrow and the University of Scranton at the end of December hosted a walkability seminar here that was pretty well attended and sparked a lot of interest. What does it mean to you to have a more walkable Scranton? And how would it, if it would, benefit the city to become more walkable? What's your opinion on that?
I briefly read an article about that. I think it's a great idea. The Heritage Trail is awesome. I think that'd be another spin on downtown where it's easy to walk. There's not a lot of parking downtown. Like I said earlier, you can't even pay a fee. So I think it'd be great. It would bring more people downtown. I know people, more people are getting involved in exercise because of obesity and type 2 diabetes. I'm one of them, so I might take part in that, in that walkable downtown. But I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Tim, the question to you. What does it mean for Scranton to become more walkable? And would it be beneficial?
Absolutely would be beneficial. And it's just, I mean, it's just another way that Scranton is starting to think more progressively and forward-thinking. You know, five years ago, 10 years ago, we wouldn't be talking about walkability in the city of Scranton. We didn't, where were you going to walk to? You know, but our downtown is starting to become more vibrant. Our First Fridays are fantastic. There's lots of things to do downtown. And, you know, the youth of today, the millennials, they don't all own cars anymore. They like that city living. And that's something that we need to, we need to really take ownership of and provide a walkability for, for not only our millennials, but for everybody in the city of Scranton that wants to utilize our city. Because it is beautiful, it is historic, we keep a clean city, and it's a safe city. And what that will do for businesses is, I mean, you could even compile the data fast enough if we have more people on the street. And it's just wonderful to see that Scranton is just in that phase now where we're thinking forward and we're doing more things.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, the question to you. What does it mean for Scranton to be a walkable city?
I believe we could have so many benefits if we had a more walkable city. And it really would be a sign of our growth as a city as well. And I have been trying to make it through the book that the gentleman who spoke at the University of Scranton a few months ago had written. And can't say I've made it all the way yet. I've been a little busy with the campaign. But, you know, I do find it very important. And when I, when I go to downtown on the weekends, there's not nearly enough people out, or they're off the streets before a certain time. And there aren't a lot of businesses that are open on Sundays. Try going for brunch on a Sunday. There aren't a whole lot of options. So I think that's something that a lot of younger people want to see, that they can, that they can walk around the city. I think there's a lot of ways to improve our walkability. And I think we'd need a plan for it, but I'm very interested in helping to continue work on that. Pedestrian safety is really important to me. I live in the Hill Section, and I know driving up and down Harrison Avenue every day, the crosswalks are so faded, you can't even see them. And the children are standing at the corners, getting ready to get their school buses in the morning on a very busy street. So we really need to make sure that it's safe for people to use the crosswalks, perhaps doing something like the University of Scranton has done on Mulberry Street here, to keep their students safe by having lights or additional signs.
Okay, thank you. And Andy, the question goes to you. What does it mean for Scranton to be more walkable?
For Scranton to be more walkable means that Scranton's going to be more prosperous. If people can walk around effectively, easily, and safely to get to where they're going, going to the store, going to the bank, going wherever they need to go, that's a goal that we should all try to get to. I believe that we should look at the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Association, see what worked for them to make the trail so nice. And see what worked for them and see what didn't work for them. You can go from Taylor all the way down to past the icebox on a trail. Eventually, it's supposed to go 40 miles. Hopefully, we'll see that in our lifetime. But from South Side all the way up into, by Scranton High School, you can walk. And that's, that's great. That's huge. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes the questions of our candidates for this evening. I extend my thanks on behalf of the League of Women Voters for their participation. And to all of the members of the audience here, if this is the type of event that you think is beneficial, we would ask on your way out for a monetary contribution. We'll have some folks standing at the door. We like, we are a volunteer and all-volunteer organization. We try to spend our time doing these things instead of raising money. So your contribution would help us offset some of the expenses for recording and some of the other things that we do. So we appreciate that. We did draw straws to see who would give the first closing statement. And we will hear first, you have two minutes. Tim Perry.
Thank you. One last time, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this event, Scranton University, for just having us here, everybody that managed to show up today, and then everybody on TV that's watching. Let me tell you something. I'm very proud to live in this city, and I'm very proud for events like this. We saw some fantastic Scranton School Board candidates come up and talk today. And in my opinion, I think we have four very strong city council candidates in front of you. And I'm very proud of that. And you have to make sure you get out there and vote. That's a civic duty. That's something, one of the most important things you can possibly do is to get out and vote. Would I would like you to vote for me? Of course. I love, I love city council. I love what I do, and I want to keep doing it for as long as you'll have me. But more importantly, you need to vote. All the candidates, all these candidates here have been working very hard. So have their families. So please, get out and vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tim Perry. Jessica Rothschild, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I appreciate the attendees and those who will be watching the debate. It's really important that you're here and finding out about the candidates. I just want to let you know a little bit about what I hope to do once elected a city council. I really want to keep college graduates here, like myself, bring young professionals in, get a new generation that's going to help our city to grow and to prosper. I think that's, that's really needed. And I want to strengthen our neighborhoods, of course, and our local businesses. I think our local businesses are really defining to us as a city, and we need to be doing more to keep them here and to bring in other businesses. And lastly, I think we need some more environmental initiatives, which I think will help all around in terms of savings for the city and, once again, bringing a younger generation in. So there's no women on city council. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. There's no other women sitting up here at the table with me. No women ran the last time when three seats were up on city council. That was really disappointing to me. So we do need a new and a different perspective on council. I can give you that. Please vote for me. I'll bring you a new vision and a new voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Chomko, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for doing this again. I'd like to thank the candidates and their families, especially their spouses, because this is time-consuming. It's a time-consuming endeavor that we've all embarked on. My entire adult life has been about service. Service to country, service to others, service to community, serving, service to grieving I'd be honored to serve the people of our, of our city. I thought about it a couple of months ago when my wife and I, we were talking about the potential of me running for city council. We sat and we talked, and I said, what would I tell my son one day when our city needed leadership and guidance and teamwork? The values and principles that I've learned throughout my life in government service, whether it be in the military, working for the federal government on the civilian side, that's ingrained in me, to work together towards a common goal for everyone, not for some, for our residents and our taxpayers. On May 21st, please vote. Bless your heart. On May 21st, please, everyone, get out and vote. Call your friends, call your family. Encourage them to get out and vote. It matters. And I would appreciate it if you can vote for me. My name's Andy Chomko. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from Mark McCandrick.
Well, thank you. Once again, thank you, Women of the League of Voters. Thank you, all of you, for coming tonight with this platform. People ask me, why am I leaving the school board? Well, I'm not, I'm not leaving anything. I'm not jumping anywhere. I'm not abandoning anybody. My daughters are no longer school age, they're in the mid to late twenties. I have three beautiful daughters, Mariah McKenzie and Marky. My oldest daughter, Mariah, got engaged in Ireland last April. She's getting married this July. They all love the city. They want to raise families in the city. They work in the city. They tell me they have faith in the city and they have faith in me. My oldest daughter just bought a house right across the street. It's convenient for her, because, you know, I cook and stuff. But they looked all over the place. They looked, you know, they thought about, you know, looking for cheaper places to live. But they said, you know what, Dad? We have faith in you. We love our city. So at the end of the day, we turn it over to our kids and grandchildren. So this is why I want to do this. I heard a common theme, walking door to door, knocking on doors. And we didn't talk about it tonight, but I'll end with it. Corruption.